This conference will now be recorded.
Ninety point one?
Nine twenty-five.
Can we remove these?
You can, however, I am going to tell you that after our town commission meeting last Monday, I received a phone call from somebody that had attended the meeting that they tested positive for COVID. So that's up to you. I will not be removing mine out of the abundance of caution.
May I ask, was it somebody on the dais or somebody in the audience?
I cannot let you know that.
Okay, if we're ready, I call to order the planning zoning commission meeting for February eighth, two seven, two, twenty twenty-one. Please go over.
Chair Marsh?
Here.
Vice Chair Carrie?
Present.
Member Henigan?
Here.
Member Hudson?
Here.
Member Pethinsky?
Present.
Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, on its nation, on its God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to say, yeah, some of us, this may be a little bit of a cloudy morning, but let's try and get through. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll move, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes. Last meeting, so I move. Second, hold in favor. Thank you. That was a long one. Okay. Today, we're discussing two items that we brought up and discussed at length at the last meeting. And I may turn it over to him to lead us through both these ordinance reviews. Or Tracy, whichever.
Because I was not here when you all initially started your conversation.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry, sorry, Trace, I didn't mean to.
So as you know, at the last meeting, the planning and zoning commission made some changes. And after that meeting, staff had worked together, the town planner, building official, the attorney, and Lisa was involved as well, to make the changes to the ordinance based on what you had directed at the last meeting. And we believe that the ordinance that is in front of you addresses your concerns. If not, let's open it up for discussion. However, what we would like to do is anything that you have, we would like to send this forward to the town commission after this meeting. So if you have any additional changes, we would like those changes to be worked out at this meeting so that we can take it forward to the commission due to the time-sensitive nature.
Okay, I'll open it up to commissioners. I can start out. I think everyone did an excellent job of this. And I think, as I see it incorporates our thoughts. So it's a couple of detail type of questions that that I have, and we just skip straight on page two. I guess, middle of the page, it says number three, timeframes. For, and then second line, once demolition or partial demolition begins, a contractor has ninety days to complete the demolition. And a hundred and eighty days in total here. I feel like those timeframes are long. These demolitions typically, they come in with a track hoe and they're out of there in under five days, often in a day or two. And I'd like to see both the ninety day and the hundred and eighty days reduced to forty-five days and ninety days. So I wanted to put that on the table.
Let me just comment on that. And I'm sorry, I could have given a more look over to you. On the timeframe, I think we kept a hundred and eighty days because it's just, it's a regular building permit. So building permits automatically get a hundred and eighty days. Right, so I don't know if, I mean, we have to call this something you're talking about because we would typically give a hundred and eighty days for any kind of permit.
Correct.
Yes, that is a state standard.
It's, you know, this is such an in and out type of item.
But what we feel-
I mean, we have other things in our codes. You would reference the standards in section sixty-seven, one fifty-three. And, you know, they have ground cover and erosion control in there, and they give thirty days for clearing and doing work there. So, I mean, there are places in our codes that the timeframes are much less. And, you know, these sites get to be, you know, it just gives the opportunity to have a neglected site. And I think that's what our whole point here is. I think forty-five to ninety days is still a lot of time. I don't want to complicate your codes, I understand that, but you know, we're, we're trying to tighten something up here. And to leave it so wide open, we create the same problem.
Rick, I agree with that's a question.
Yeah, with regard to what Rick said, why not try what's here, and if it doesn't work, we can get on it. It's consistent with our current code. But I did have a question that might be applicable to what Rick's talking about. We use the term time certain throughout this document, and we understand what that is. And this might deal with what Rick's talking about. What if somebody initiates this and there's something that goes on? A pandemic, hurricanes, that things have to stop? Does that, how would that be affected in time certain?
Well, you do know that there is a state law that basically says, once emergency declaration is declared by the governor, anybody who has any type of building permit can ask for an extension consistent with that emergency. And so even though we have these timeframes in here, if they come in, they have to request it though. They say, you know, due to the executive order, because in that executive order, the governor always allows for basically construction to stop.
So if we have a hurricane, emergency is declared, five days later, the emergency is done.
They still get, usually the timeframe is an additional hundred and eighty days on top of the building permit. It can, it's like the days of the emergency plus six months.
Oh, wow.
And a lot of contractors don't avail themselves of that, but it sits on top of your code. And I've had situations where developers have gotten two additional years to develop property based on the executive order. So don't worry about them.
An demolition can be pushed out to two years?
I think if they really wanted to force our hand, they could make that request, and it would be very good.
And even if we went with Rick on the forty-five, they could still push.
And some do, but it's only, and they usually don't, it's only for different projects that I've seen happen. But I've got those letters, and we've done the calculation, and we've said you have three hundred and fifty-five more days, or, you know, six hundred and twenty days, which is, it seems crazy. And we hope that they won't take that long, but that is a state law.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I think on the scale we're dealing with, I think we're fairly immune from the developer request kind of approach, hopefully. Let me just, before, if it's a, Gary, you said, or somebody said that includes the length of permit review?
No.
Oh, okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't hearing.
Yeah, no, this is-
That's my comment on that point, and then I had another kind of question comment on the next page, page three. We're middle of the page again, sixty-seven, fifty-two, commencement and duration, and the fourth line down starts out, two years for family residential estates. Does that mean everything that we have a single family? Or is that our RSE estate zoning that we're talking about there?
Yes, that's estate zoning. That's, it's specifically for the estates.
Okay, so the two, the two years is the estate zoning. What is it for the RSF zone?
One year.
One year.
Okay.
Next phrase.
All right, that clarifies the question. Thank you.
Good, good point. Go ahead, Teddy.
My question was, how, would you use a letter of credit for enforcing the completion of the demolition? Which I like having something in there. How do we enforce the ongoing maintenance of a vacant lot? Of a lot that's been fully demoed?
I'll try to add on, we do have no ordinances or requirement-
Loudly.
Oh, we have no ordinances or requirement for the lot to be maintained. And we have heights at which the grass, you know, has to be cut.
It's a general code enforcement.
Right, so I mean, in terms of appearance, standards, and like, I mean, that is applicable to a vacant lot.
And it's just a dollar amount fined for a period of time if they don't do it? Or can we go in and do it if they don't within a certain amount of time?
Yes, and yes. We're working on actually having, right now, we do not have an immediate fine process, but we are working on that at the other ordinance that we're working at. Right now, what we have in place is the magistrate process.
That's so complicated.
Exactly.
That is why we're showing that and having a citation.
But even with that, I don't, I don't want people to think that a citation process takes the way you do process. Even if they get cited, they still have the right to request a hearing in front of a special magistrate. You have to go through process.
But then they're more inclined to do that as opposed to us having to take it to the magistrate because they're not doing anything.
They're more likely to need citation.
Exactly, but at some point, we've got a little bit more enforcement if we do it that way. A little more quick enforcement than having for us to have to take it to the magistrate.
Just out of curiosity, is there any method for the town to perform the maintenance?
We can do that as well. You can stop in.
I think that's one of the things that's really irritating to most neighbors that have dealt with this is that, you know, the legality of it goes back and forth. But there's a method by which a town could then enforce maintenance improvement.
Right, with a letter of credit, we can do that.
I know, but I just, we need to let folks know that.
I've seen that elsewhere. They'll come in, the town will come in and mow it, and then lean the property.
Right.
I mean, it's a lean, right, making sure.
I don't get attention.
Do we have that?
Yes, absolutely.
The problem is you may never get the money back, but you can definitely do it.
It helps the neighbors.
It does, and you have to lean on property, and sooner or later as well.
I'd like to endorse what Rick said about the timeframes. I think I'd like to tighten them up. And my question is, like, for the record, if someone could talk through how we determine the base value that the hundred and ten percent is then going to apply to?
So it would be based on the cost of the demolition project. So when the contractor comes in to do a permit for the demolition project, there's a contract and a cost associated with that. And that's how we, we charge them for their building permit. So it would be based on that cost.
So it's based on the demolition? Now, does that include returning it to a greenfield if they in fact walk away after doing part of it?
Yes, because they have to not only do the demolition, but they also have to bring the site back to empty lot standards after, according to the code.
And that's, that's included in the estimate they are giving you to get their permit?
Well, it should.
Yeah, exactly. A letter of credit and an amount equal to a hundred and ten percent of the total cost of the demolition project. Not just the demolition. Which shall include grading and other requirements of sections, section sixty-seven, one thirty-six, and one fifty-three.
Right.
So it has to be an estimate, and if they lowball it, we could always just say, this is what we, this is what it was before. This is what we want another credit to be.
Yeah, I just wanted it in the record of how that's determined and that it's a sufficient amount to satisfy if the project is abandoned.
And as for the difference, and it is industry standard to do one hundred and ten percent.
Yes, that's correct.
Ask Cory a question.
Sure.
Cory, do you know how other locales handle demolition timeframes, or if they do?
I really don't know the timeframes. I, I think most of them do tie them into the building permit timeframes. And where they, what I have seen is where there isn't new construction, of course, that you do have to, like this ordinance is proposing, you have to return it to, you have to saw it, you have to irrigate it in some cases. But truthfully, off the top of my head, I just don't know the timeframe.
Thank you.
So I'll say, we can reduce it. I'm not going to tell you you can't reduce it. We just thought it was better timed for the regular permit timeframe. But, you know, I'm thinking about it, I don't think there's anything illegal about reducing the timeframe. As long as we set it out very clearly here. And we think they can, and if they can't get it done, they can always request an extension if they can show the clock.
It's hard to go the other way.
Yeah, I think, so you're proposing forty-five and ninety?
Correct.
Can we try sixty and one twenty?
It's compromise.
Yeah. You have my support for anything that you reduce.
Yeah. I think that would be more reasonable, knowing what can happen in commissions. Forty-five is, I agree in principle, I just don't think practicality is there.
I agree as well, but does staff have any objection to this for any particular reason that maybe we're not picking up on? To reduce to?
There is no objection, but to, in terms of the length of construction, we're actually moving, as we have here in sixty-two, fifty-two, sixty-seven, fifty-two, to have a one-year timeline for construction projects across the board. So this is actually fifty percent of that kind, we look at that standpoint. And what the building code has is a progressive hundred and eighty-day permit approved, approval process. So if a partial inspection is called in, the clock restarts, and then there's another hundred and eighty days. And they call another inspection, the clock restarts, it's another hundred and eighty days. So a hundred and eighty days since the last inspection. The town is moving to one block, three sixty-five days from start to finish for every permit across the board. So this is already a half of that time. So, you know, there will be pushback, and whenever we do look at stuff, we think about what do contractors have to point to in the event that we do end up having a magistrate issue? So can someone point back and say, every other permit that you guys issue has three hundred and sixty days? Why are you guys limiting me this one to one eight? So, you know.
Because of the damage that's been done in the past.
Understood, but-
From the record, let's just get it on the record.
But that's just a justify or thought process when, you know, when we propose something. And ultimately, it is, you know, the discretion of the council and the commission to make that final determination.
I think the only thing that I would like to point out, you know, we can always try to just have a kind of similar timeframe because besides, our system is not as new that we use, so if anything is not the same, we just use our calendars to keep track of different. So that would be, you know, just one thing to always consider is try to make them all kind of similar as much as possible. That's why we do it that way a little bit.
I think we're looking into a new building permits program as well, correct, Dr. Annie? We're going to be looking at doing a more robust system for the future.
Yes, that would be on, and actually, Carla brought something up that I'll probably just squeeze in here, that our staff is extremely efficient. I'm, I'm still in awe of what Carla, Lisa, and Katie does in the front. The citizens of this town might think that we have this awesome system in place that automatically tracks dates of when permits expire, and we have an automatic notification. They do have those things in place somewhere, but we don't have it here. Most of what happens is these young ladies take time, they develop charts and Excel spreadsheets, and they go through them weekly and check every permit that they have right now in place, and chip off and send out notifications. And they do it so quickly, it seems like we have this awesome computer program in place. All right, so that's also another thing to consider. Who else, what Carla just pointed out. So we do have that, and we have to consider staff, and how we actually manage permits overall.
That's good to hear. So well done. Guy, one thing on the six months from the date of issuance of a building permit. What's the standard duration that you can have building permits open for?
According to the Florida building code, there is none, and we actually do have projects where very smart contractors do that. They call an inspection.
It says issuance of a building permit. I'm talking about building permit, because I'm used to seeing permits stays, it's open for twelve months is the normal, if I recall, for most municipalities. An owner can have an open building permit and not construct for a maximum of twelve months. Am I right or wrong?
We do not have that in our ordinance. We are actually moving towards that. So we're updating the amendments, the technical amendments right now, and that is one of the things that we're going to take away, which is the six-month ongoing extension, and make it a solid one-year start to finish. And that will also help us with our funding too, because then-
But this is purely for the permit. If you issue a permit, and after that, they're all ahead of time, up to twelve months before you can commence.
Well, actually, it's a hundred and eighty days.
Well, that's, I mean-
And in this case, we're saying if you don't commence in half that time, ninety days, it expires.
No, I understand. I don't know if that can help me, or I'm just curious. It seems, and I may be wrong, that some municipalities, most have a permit can be good for twelve months. Because there's, as you know, even on the theme of other things, after twelve months, you can apply, reapply for an improvement. You know, you have a twelve-month cooling off period.
So you wonder if this is too tight already?
I am just, I just want to make sure we're not, you know, and I agree with everything that's said here on certain time period. I just want to make sure we're not off the chart in terms of what other municipalities are doing. And this is strictly for issuance of a building permit, not for starting form.
Right.
Right.
This is just for demolition.
And I know, I just, I'm picking up on this because I don't want to-
Most municipalities do not amend timeframes. They basically adhere to what the Florida building code, which is the state standard, although-
Okay, as long as it's compliant, then I-
Right, so we are already shorter, and this is probably, you know, twenty-five percent of that time.
Let me be clear, I'm sorry, I really shouldn't, I really shouldn't have given that to you. What we did in this ordinance, we've done two things in this one ordinance. We dealt with demolitions and we dealt with construction totally. We had those as separate ordinances, and I put them together, one, because they're kind of related, and two, to stay blunt. The issue is close enough in relation to put the vote here. But the question that you're asking about is about construction generally, not just about-
Yeah, I just don't want it to cross pollinate right here.
Right, right, right. So your question is clearly about building permits.
Which can include a demo form.
Which can include a demo form. That's absolutely correct.
So I just, I want to make sure that we're, we're comfortable.
So, Mark, just to give you some information, the current technical amendments to the Florida building code state that you can have a permit open for two years, correct, Dr. Annie?
Yes, according to the maximum.
That's the technical amendments to the Florida building code current. So we're working to reduce that here in Ocean Ridge to one year, not two.
Okay, that's fine. All right, I just, I know it's a different subject, but they are related.
You're correct, you are correct. I think you're right. I'm trying to think about some other municipalities. I think it is generally a year, but this has already been on the book.
No, I'm just, I'm just sharing this information with the other commissioners, just to give them a feel for where we stand versus other municipalities. Okay. All right, any more comments? I think it's come a long way, and I think we're on the right track, so again, thanks to Neil and Rick, and all the others that are participating. I think it's ready for a motion.
Wait, Chair, don't forget the comments, and if you call for it.
Call for public comments, city public comments? I predicted that. Okay, yes, I entertain this motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the draft ordinance demolition and construction timeframes as proposed with the amendment of on page two, item three. The contractor has sixty days to complete the demolition. And on the next line, completed no longer than one hundred and twenty days after the issuance. All else remains as proposed.
I'll second. Hold in favor. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the second ordinance review, which is regarding determining building height. Again, I will open it up for discussion. The commission or staff have any input they want to?
The only thing I want to say on this one is that we tried to take back this, we had a very robust conversation about this at the last meeting. So we tried to deal with, and I have to give credit to Cory because I have to rely on him heavily in this regard, he was the best on. We added this part about the parapet, and we tried, and we're not sure we were successful, so we look forward to your comments to add a section about the floor, the finished floor elevation being seven feet. You know, for every foot above that section, the corresponding decrease of one foot in the maximum building height. We think we know what you want, but look forward to your comments.
Okay, I'll open up the deal first.
Can I ask a couple of questions before we do that, only because I'm coming in cold because I wasn't here, so I read the minute. And I just made it, it made sense to me. Just, the, how do I express this? Page number three starts about the back, some of building heights, and goes over to the next side, next page. It says- this is where you're talking about measuring from this to be above seven feet. The NAVD, for every foot above seven feet NAVD, there shall be a corresponding decrease of one foot in the maximum building height. What does that do? So for instance, if the NAVD on this site is nine feet, that means the height of the house then is going to be 34. What does that do to your ceiling height inside the house if you're a two-story home?
Well, we discussed that briefly. And I think the feeling was that you can still get let me see, industry standard heights.
What happens if it's one of those lots? And I think I picked this up somewhere in the minutes that we have some lots that might be 10 to 11 maybe?
Yeah, and again, and again, the, you know, the whole discussion if you recall, is about mass scale. So, yeah, those folks that have, you know, abnormally high properties, especially adjacent to the water. They're going to be penalized, you know, somewhat. And it may result, I think the discussion we had, it may result in more flat roofs type architecture than the normal roof, which I think the commission was
But I think our understanding is that this all comes out of the roof and the roof pitch.
Right.
Uh, the, the height of which you can build the maximum height of the second floor of a house is 24, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, 24 is the timing. So that 24 remains the same and that, that 12 feet between the 24 and the 36 has been how big a roof you wanted to put on, on that 24-foot house. So if you still think about, that's two, two floors of 12-foot ceilings. That's a lot. And most, most wouldn't go 12-foot on the second floor. So it, it's pretty generous.
Okay, I just didn't see that in the notes and just thought.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, and being in the business, I mean, if you want to do 12-foot on the ground floor, which I think is abnormally high, then you may limit it yourself to nine or 10 feet down the upper floor. So again, that's well within good design standards.
Can I ask Mark a quick? I thought somewhere in our discussion last month, we were using a figure of 100 no, 43 feet, 7 plus 36?
Yes, that was
Now, I know, I saw that for the multi-family homes, but I thought that was going to be part of the single thing as well.
Let's, Neil is a mathematician and a board. It's in the minutes, actually. It's not in the ordinance.
It's just getting to the same place with math a different way.
Yeah, well, I, but I didn't see that, how that worked with what was on on this.
Where are you seeing the 43 on there?
I think that was
That's the way we talked about it last.
Oh, yeah.
We took the old seven plus 36. And got the 43, but we're getting to the same place, just another way.
Yes, it's, are you going bottom up or top down? And the, the seven is basic, is basically for the last, I can't remember how many years now, that's been our base elevation. So that would have given you 43.
Right.
If you're on ridge or somewhere down at your end of town, that's already above seven, just construction site, you're, you're going to penetrate that 43-foot ceiling. It's not like we can put a 43-foot line across the town and say no one can go above it. But we don't want people going above it because of rising water. It's, if your geography puts you above it, that's okay. But the intent was we have these FEMA adjustments that we, you can't FEMA adjustments aren't fair. FEMA adjustments are just reality. And we just didn't want the town rising all the time arbitrarily by what's happening to a flood.
But the way the math works is that we were talking from zero to 43. And this talks about from seven to 36. It's still the same.
Same number.
But this starts at seven as its starting point, which I think is a much clearer solution than creating a new number that nobody's familiar with.
Yeah, I kind of threw white flags up to give us a point of measure. And I think Neil's formula works well because most or other towns have what they call a point of measurement or datum. We are now adapting seven foot as our datum, which I think is
I mean, to digest it and understand the impact, you do have to understand the height of the, the tie beam. It's a shame they're not co-located together, but they're part of, they're part of the package. That, that the top, the tie beam height, I don't think we've had people come in and say, I want to build higher than the tie beam. So who would we really impact it other than squeezing from the tie beam to the maximum elevation?
Yeah, it puts, as I said, and I just want to encourage flat roofs, but it's on those few lots, and I think we should be clear, these are few that are going to be affected of that 10 to 12-foot starting point in terms of FEMA itself. I think it'll, that's where the architects and owners have come up with. But I think it's a nice uniform title by which we can now
It's simple, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
May I also ask why we went from 30 inches to three feet on the parapet?
For equipment screening.
Simply needed just to really cover it. Okay.
I have, unless anybody else. One concern I have is the RM uh, what is it, RM? R and H. R and H. Which were, everybody, that's a medium density. It's not on here.
Which one? RH M or R?
RH. Again, we're fortunate that most of those occur on the, the dune line or the higher. But how do we come about establishing now FEMA or DEP dictates the height of your floor elevation on those properties? And that's 15 foot five to the underside of the grade beam. You have a two-foot grade beam. So most of those properties are going to start at 17 and a half feet, finished floor. Which we now currently allow 44 feet from that point. I, I may be cross pollinating here, but I don't know if this, how are we going to address that? Is this just purely for RS?
Well, we have RH.
You have, you have, you have it.
Still, the maximum building height is 44 feet.
This is that RSF, RSE and RMM, if my understanding is correct.
All of the districts are here.
Except RH.
No, it's there.
I just want to be conscious or have us be aware that we don't because that, that finished floor height has been established by, as I said, DEP and FEMA.
Correct. And it's not changing here because you can see it's still 44 feet here.
Right. I just want to, I'm just, I'm passing this along for the rest of the commission that might not we don't have a lot of that development in town. So don't be surprised if you see.
But you're saying we might see something that appears 61 feet tall.
Right.
Lisa, where we have RH M, would it be very difficult to get a sense of what the FEMA flood elevation is in that area? Could you comment on that, please?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commission. If you give me a street, I can look it up fairly quickly or an area that's RH M. Okay, well, first of all, the area in the north end is affected by FEMA the most. That's the Island Drive, Marlin, Benito area where there's a four, four-foot differential from um, the current elevation to what's being proposed by FEMA. It's a four-foot differential, so that would be a four-foot reduction. Right? The staff has, we have not analyzed those areas along the ridge that may fall into these zoning categories that are a lot higher than an elevation seven or eight or nine.
Right.
So we, so, so it's a, it's a, it's, that's an important question to ask because unintended, unintended consequence, for example, of a home that's on the ridge. And it's not necessarily on the ridge on Old Ocean or A1A, but I mean, there's a ridge on Harbor Drive North and South. Um, those homes are a lot higher than an elevation seven. They're higher than, I believe, an elevation 10. We have not analyzed as staff how many of those homes regardless of FEMA's mandate, is higher than like an elevation 10. And if they were to come in and build a home, how would they be affected by this proposed ordinance?
Their base flood elevation wasn't raised higher than seven because of FEMA, so they're, they're building the same way they are now.
So, so then this ordinance is specific only those that are affected by these FEMA changes?
That is correct.
Yes. But then speaking about RH M area, that would be east of A1A, near like the Ocean Inlet and Tamarind, that area.
Well, the Ocean View area is not a concern.
No, we're talking north.
Right.
Or north. East of A1A.
From the analysis that we, okay, so from the analysis that we did, we looked at the areas that we thought were going to be an issue and that's not in, in here. Um, the FEMA maps change in certain areas. In some areas, they stay the same, like if Ocean Club Villas and the Manners and the Dunes, is that what we're talking about? That one, those don't, are not affected. Those are in the X zones. Like I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how we would differentiate between those that are changing through FEMA and those that are already existing high elevations. I guess then this is strictly for those that have changed this last time around
Correct.
in elevation. I probably need to I don't know if we need to say that because FEMA changes from time to time for different reasons.
You don't like the idea of
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned about those areas that are already high in elevation.
Doesn't affect them.
It doesn't, so then it doesn't
They're going to build the same way they do now. That's the whole point.
Okay, well.
I just want to
I'm concerned to like, the, the, Mark's concern is that there's some areas of elevation that are high.
Are forced to be.
Are forced to be high. I, I, if this ordinance is much better, that you're using a point of reference that's a finished floor, much better. The other way was, was a lot more complicated and could be challenged. So, so what you all did here was a lot better than what we had before.
So you're saying that if you're looking at your chart from FEMA, a lot of the area in RH M that was staying the same, correct?
It appears to be because it's pretty high to begin with. Now, the last time FEMA changed this, all the folks on the coast were affected. This, this change is more for those on the west side of town because the modeling was focused on the secondary effects of the intercoastal waterway with respect to storm surge. Different, a different evaluation. But the FEMA that changed not too long ago affected those on the, on the, more on the coast, which would be in line with what you're saying. So if that were to happen, then what happens to this?
Wouldn't change, wouldn't change again.
I don't, I, I don't know. Is this because this is a change? Are we saying because this is a, we're making this change?
It's all relative to seven. It's all relative then to FEMA. So if FEMA goes down, you'd get the ability to go and you'd lose less or get more. But you're never going to be able to go higher than the 36 that we've always had because that's not being deleted if we're only taking away what FEMA takes away.
Or the 44 for RH M.
Can I ask you a question just for, so I understand this. What's, what's the practical difference between RMM and RH M? It just, is one like a condo and the other townhomes or?
Good story.
Yeah, RH M is the high-density multi-family residential bit.
And, and we can, in the past, we have a couple of four-story buildings that meet that and those
44 feet, right?
Those, those are done or is this going to allow more of those?
No, it's not going to change anything. It's still remaining at 44 feet, so it's not changing.
You could have new.
New four-story buildings.
Yes.
That are condominiums or
Or, or knocked down, replaced, correct?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. I think as long as everybody feels comfortable, I think we should punch. Punch?
So this is a discussion for and I, you know, have that maybe we ought to highlight in this ordinance that properties within zone X will not be affected
Right.
by a change, by this restriction. Because it is not subject to FEMA height. For example, the center lots on Sable Island, the ones, if you look at, or floodlots, you'll actually see a line around the center and those are in the X zone. So any construction happening on those, we're going to call it a natural ridge, will not be affected by, by, by these restrictions.
I think that's
Same, happening on the dune side where some of these properties are copiable are actually on the natural zone X areas.
So, Dr. Annie, I think we can explain that well in the meeting. I don't think we've got something we can put in the ordinance itself.
I mean, I put it in a whereas clause because we were very, you very clearly state that wherever a base flood elevation is dictated by the FEMA um, map. And I believe that you all passed the ordinance already tying results to FEMA.
We did.
So that's
No, best available data. We're utilizing best available data.
Correct. Okay. Um, so to me, I don't know. I don't know if it's necessary. How do we understand that it's necessary? If you want to just explain it, we can do it in a whereas clause.
Well, I, I'm wondering if we should just say if this is strictly with respect to the FEMA changes, this current FEMA changes. Because I don't, we don't know what the next go-round is going to be.
Well, I think it's already clear though, because it says wherever a base flood elevation is dictated by the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program maps.
So then that can change.
It'll change.
Regulations will change.
Then it would change, I guess. I mean, I'm just thinking ahead. Because this is the second go-round of changes in a decade, which is like unprecedented.
Yeah.
Yeah, as time goes on. But, but the X zone are, are the zones that that Mark was concerned about and what, and was what, what I was saying as well. Because those, those are areas of elevation that exist higher to begin with.
Well, sorry, my brain cells working here. I think he, the guy has brought it back. Can we do a whereas? So just as a catchall to say Or just as a catch-all to say that properties with unique characteristics or something of elevation, just so that, that's more clarity when you're trying to review. Does that make sense?
Makes sense as long as it's specific and not vague. If it says unique elevation.
Yeah.
Anybody will think they have a unique decision.
Oh, no, 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 no. And the whereas clause is just a whereas in the ordinance to kind of explain that it's not something that's codified in the.
Right.
Do we know what the, you said exode.
Yes, exodes.
Is that the.
I think a specific reference.
It's the higher areas.
But I just want to, it's kind of a catch-all for.
So would you like to talk about the whereas clause now so we can nail that down so that you're comfortable with it? Properties in the X zone are not affected by these replacements.
That's simple. We don't have to get into bridge or any kind of.
No.
Do you want to say properties on, in the exode as designated on the FEMA maps or?
Yeah, it needs to relate.
It needs to relate to that, some way.
That's the only place it references.
Right. And is the, is the commission's intent that when FEMA changes, this changes? Because I know Neil, you used if FEMA went down, they would get more. But if FEMA rose up, are we ever going to box ourselves out of two-story homes on those few lots that, you, you say there's only a few, right?
Yeah, the point lots primarily.
Okay, are we ever going to box ourselves?
I mean, I mean, we could, because the, the other problems the town has would be way bigger than the problem we have here. Because the flood, we'd have flooding everywhere.
And I think the other thing is, when the maps change, we, that's why we're here, just like we're reacting this time. But to try to anticipate the next iteration is very difficult.
Yeah, I think it would survive the test, but.
Yeah, I think the language is clear and strong. Okay.
So can I make a motion then? Or so. I motion that we accept the draft ordinance, building height and parapets with the additional whereas clause reflecting the area X FEMA.
After you get a second, if you can.
Yeah.
I'll second.
In a public moment? Hold it a favor. Thank you. Good job there, Neil.
Yeah.
It's that, yeah, we did it. But I think we simplified, which is the goal.
They took a rambling discussion minutes from last time and made it into something that worked.
All right. Before we adjourn, are there any general comments from staff or commission?
All right, um, in the effort to increase accessibility and public information, the building department will be hosting a monthly forum. And this will occur on the day when we have council meeting, which is generally the first Monday in each month, between five PM and five forty-five PM, starting in March. And the first forum will actually be discussing the major topic we spoke about today, which has to do with the FEMA elevation. So, you know, just putting that out. The commission is interested in that, that is a discussion we could have that time to discuss, you know, the history of the FEMA flood elevate and how it is impacting the town and we could get, you know, into more detail to the projections of where we're going or what the town might. So, you know, we could encourage your fellow citizens to be a part of this discussion on the first of March. And then we'll have future discussions prior to commission meetings.
Educational workshops are a part of our enhanced communication system that we're working on here in town. So I want to thank the official guy for putting those workshops together for the community and the contractors to come in and receive a little bit of education about how things work here in Ocean Ridge.
That's, that's excellent. Could I also suggest that maybe in the coastal star, you kind of have them announce this or advertise that this is.
Absolutely.
That's the strongest publication we have in this area right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rick, are you, you comfortable with these going forward as your, as our public spokesman at the council meeting?
I, yes, you never know what they're going to ask.
You inherited that graciously from me.
It depends how full their agenda is, how, if they've got a light agenda, they are, seem more interested in what's going on in planning and zoning. A foliage, so put it on.
Mondays are just bad for me. All right, I'm finished, so I will step in where I can if this becomes.
But I, I gave them a little explanation of what we were doing last week and there didn't, no concerns were raised. Just going with the work and process.
Okay, anybody else got any comments or questions or give me? Okay.
Yeah, Brett in the audience as well.
Yeah, Brett, can you come up and introduce yourself, sorry, quickly, just a short version.
I'm sorry that.
We finally see you.
When I picked up my packet, it said eight-thirty, so I thought it was changed in meeting time, I apologize. My name is Britt Platahan, I live at fifty-five, fifty-six North Ocean Boulevard. And I'm learning a lot on this committee and I apologize for being delayed today.
No apology necessary.
What is it, eight-thirty on the? Oh, okay, so I thought that was odd.
Brett, I have a personal question. I, since you're an alternate and I have a summer home, are you here in the summers to be an alternate if I'm not here?
No, I'm not as well, I leave in, by June first. And then back usually by October, this year was a little different because of three medical issues, so.
Well, we strongly encourage your participation while you're in town because it's always easier to, you know, you know, face to face and please, any participation because as an alternative, you're free to enter. Where are you going, where?
Where, when am I going to be gone?
Yeah.
I don't have a schedule yet.
Okay. Okay, well, what am I doing?
I'm in trouble too, so.
Okay. Motion, adjourned.
My motion, adjourned.
I second.
Hold fair.
Hi.